I'd like to call this meeting to order. First, I would like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there's anyone in the audience who is also recording this meeting. Seeing none, if we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I would like to reply, "The United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
As you all know, we entered into a successful negotiation with the town manager and signed a contract and reappointed the manager, and at this time, I need to give her the oath of office before January 31 is required. So if you could please rise, say your name when I fill it in. Raise your hand. I.
Julie Jacobson.
Do accept the office of Town Manager of the Town of Auburn.
Do accept the office of Town Manager of the Town of Auburn.
And agree to obey and be bound by such chapter.
And agree to obey and be bound by such chapter.
Bylaws and state laws.
Bylaws and state laws.
As are or may be.
As are or may be.
From time to time.
From time to time.
Laid down for the government of the Town of Auburn.
Laid down for the government of the Town of Auburn.
And to carry out the duties as faithfully, impartially, and to the best of my ability.
And to carry out the duties as faithfully, impartially, and to the best of my ability.
Excellent. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.[100.42][100.42][applause]
And the next item of business is public comment. We have Chief Stephen Coleman.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. As the Board is aware, since I was appointed Chief of the Department, we have been functioning without a clearly defined second-in-command of the Department who can fully act in my absence since the deputy-chief position was not backfilled. This has been an issue that's been on my radar for the last several years in order to ensure the continuity of operations within our department. I'm here tonight proudly to inform the Board that I have appointed Captain Glenn Johnson to the position of Assistant Chief. As an Assistant Chief, he will still be a member of the Union. He will still be working his normal assignments as a shift commander. He is not a confidential employee. And this was not the assignment, as you will remember, or the responsibilities of the previous deputy chief. The deputy was a non-Union confidential employee who was a salaried position and had complete authority over all the day-to-day operations of the Department Monday through Friday. That is not what this position is. The Assistant Chief position was created to give the Department, like I said, a clearly-defined second-in-command, which is something that we've been lacking within the hierarchy for a few years. Gives me the opportunity to begin to train someone in some of the administrative functions and duties that need to be done in my absence, such as the budget, attending Board of Selectmen's meetings, finance meetings, interactions with the town manager, et cetera. Also, to assume command of large-scale incidents in my absence. Assistant Chief Johnson has been with the Department for 15 years, and he's done an outstanding job as a captain and a shift commander, and I am confident that it will carry forward in his new role, and I'm very proud to be here to put him before you this evening to inform you of this. As a point of information, just for the Board, as a point of information, this position is budget-neutral. It does not add to the overall complement of the Department, and it does not add to the overall complement of the supervisory staff. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Did you want to come up and say something?
I'd like to say thank you first of all, and look forward to working with all of you in the future in upcoming events. So, thank you.
Congratulations. The next item we have is a presentation with the school committee, with the school department, Dr. Brunel. I'm not sure who else is with you tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board.
Excuse me, Dr. Brunel, if it's easier for you, you're welcome to come up and sit here, whatever's easier for you.
That's okay. Joe will be right by my side.
Okay. Well, both of you, there's room for both of you.
Okay. So, thank you, on behalf of this school committee, for having us here this evening. We are here, as you know, there are many changes upcoming in the Auburn Public Schools. The Town of Auburn generously supported a new middle school at the election in May of 2013, and pending a final local approval, we hope that we will actually begin construction. We've been in detailed design by late this March. Additionally, there has been an Auburn Public Schools master plan team that has been working, and they have come forth through the school committee with a couple of recommendations. First, to reutilize the current 10 Swanson Road property, taking the students from JB and Pakicog and educating them there together. And that was unanimously approved by school committee. The second recommendation was to eventually keep, in terms of educational facilities, Auburn High School, the new Auburn Middle School, the 10 Swanson Road property that will educate our intermediate students, and then Bryn Mawr and Pakicog as the primary schools. Those transitions are all happening, we are hoping, at this point, at the start of the 2015-16 school year. We're going to go over all of this information in great detail at our joint meeting on Wednesday. But the specific reason for our request tonight is to seek your support of submitting an application to the Mass School Building Authority through their accelerated repair program. That's a new program that they started, actually, last year, and it's designed for smaller-scale projects, not complete new construction or complete rebuild in addition, but instead to address, really around the energy efficiency issues, roofs, windows, HVAC systems, and the like. You'll hear from us on Wednesday in great detail how we intend, right now, with Mr. Rick Rengard as the master plan team chairperson, and we've been working over the past several months to look at current CIP funds that have been appropriated to the schools and looking at how we can utilize those to complete the refurbishment of the current Auburn Middle School, and we're confident that we can do that, and we'll go over that in great detail. But through this accelerated repair program, if we are, it's a several-step process, we would actually submit the application that requires school committee and Board of Selectmen approval, and it goes into MSBA. They then determine what value of funds they have to award, and then there was a next step in the process. So, what you would be voting on tonight or Wednesday would be just to allow us to submit the application. The reason that we're seeking to do this is that we could receive 50 percent of the cost of these repairs that we've outlined here for you through the state, through the MSBA program, thus saving us CIP funds that we can either not utilize if needed or to use them for other repairs that are needed in the schools. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Fahy to just outline for you, from that summary sheet that you received tonight, what it is we're hoping to do through this program.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. What we put on for the statement of interest is Pakicog Elementary School would like to upgrade the HVAC system and also replace the second boiler there. At Bryn Mawr School, would like to, again, work on the HVA system and the roof repair. At 10 Swanson Road, roof repair, HVAC, and second boiler replacement. And as Dr. Brunel stated, this is clearly just a statement of interest, it's just to put our name out there. It doesn't guarantee us anything, and it doesn't lock us into anything either. So, it's, the way we look at it, it's a way to save 50 percent of each one of these projects.
Thank you. Did you have anything else right now? Do any members have any questions? Mrs. Simontian?
Yeah, I have a few questions, and I will not be able to attend the joint meeting on Wednesday. I have a work engagement that's been planned since December, so I would ask that, whatever handouts you have for Wednesday, if you could, I don't know, get one to my mailbox in the Town Hall, I'd appreciate it, so I could look that over as well. But by this sheet and what's written in the last column as far as CIP, is this money that has already been allocated?
Correct.
Because it seems that that's what it's indicating.
Correct.
So, this is not an additional cost?
It's an additional cost.
This money that's already been voted on by town meeting and set aside for these specific things?
These items here are already identified for these specific projects, and if anything, we look at it as a benefit for when MSBA looks at these projects, that see that we already have, as a town, identified the revenue source for that. So, if anything, it's a plus for us.
All right. I understand that part of it. I just, but this has already gone through town meeting, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? So, I had asked to have this on the agenda with the potential that the Board take a vote tonight, knowing that all members couldn't be at this joint meeting. So, you know, it's up to the rest of the Board what we wish to do. I'm happy to entertain a motion to take a vote tonight, or, Mrs. Simontian, yes?
I actually, so, what you're asking us to approve is just to send an application to find out if we can participate in this program?
Correct. It doesn't lock us into a dollar amount.
It commits us to nothing.
Commits us to nothing. It just puts us up on the radar screen.
Or list for them to read.
How does that process work? Do you know what the timeline is?
It's actually, it's an accelerated program, so we'd actually probably, I think, would find out in the early spring whether or not we qualify.
These applications are due in by February 14th. One of the challenges is, along with getting approval from the Board of Selectmen and School Committee, we need to submit approved minutes that demonstrate that votes, we actually have to read the resolutions. Were actually taken and were approved by both of the Boards. It doesn't commit us to anything, because then they'll get back to us, either, A, we want to consider these projects, or we can't consider them at this time. So, it seems a win-win, I would say.
Mr. Holstrom.
Just on that note, through the Chair, so, I read that the resolutions have to be read in full. Is that something that would have to be done tonight in order to submit the application?
No.
Or will that happen on Wednesday after the full discussion on what work is to be being done?
It could happen at either, so long as we get approved minutes back. We need to submit by February 14th.
Just for the application process?
Correct.
Again, so, I'm happy to entertain a motion where all Board members will not be at the Wednesday meeting, and whoever makes that motion would need to change the date to January 27th and read the entire resolution. I move that it be resolved. And there would be three separate motions.
Are you telling me that that has to be done tonight?
I'm not.
The complete resolution tonight?
Or Wednesday.
If we vote tonight, then the complete resolution has to be read tonight, and I wanted to give every Board member an opportunity to vote.
Through the Chair, will there be any changes to this as we go along? If we vote on this tonight, it's resolved, we have a motion in front of us, Wednesday's meeting depend upon the discussion, what kind of questions come up. Can this change at that point? Something that was overlooked, something we missed, something that may have come out that we weren't aware of? Will that happen on Wednesday night?
I think there's always an opportunity for a Board if they wanted to reconsider a vote. I don't anticipate, though, that we would be bringing forth, as a school department, any changes for the statement of interest. We have gone over this and identified this. Mr. Gray has worked with Mr. Fahy very closely. We've got considerable other information to share with you on Wednesday night regarding specific plans for the 10 Swanson Road property, how our CIP funds will be utilized, going back to the '08-'09, right up through, and some amendments that we've recommended and school committee have approved through FY '18. But I don't anticipate any changes to this statement of interest request. Do you?
No.
Yeah, no.
And, Dr. Brunel, has the school committee taken a vote prior to Wednesday night's meeting?
They did.
Okay.
They have taken it at their meeting last week, and it was unanimously supported by them.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Simontian?
In this packet that's in front of us, there's a lot of information in here that was requested by the MSBA. Is that, is that information to process the application? Is that information they require to process it, or?
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Well, I mean, there's a questionnaire, it's got Mr. Gray's name and telephone number on it. There's one for Pakicog, there's one for Bryn Mawr, and there's a series of questions. Has the district had any teacher layoffs, on class sizes?
Yes, those are required. That's the actual application that will go in with a cover sheet that I believe was also included, which details the required vote, required form of vote to submit an SOI, a statement of interest.
So, this is information that they require to process the application or to make a determination when we submit the application?
To make a determination, but this is the application that we need to submit to them, yes.
And there's one for three schools?
Correct. Bryn Mawr, Pakicog, and the 10 Swanson Road property.
What does the Board wish to do? Mrs. Brotherton?
Through the Chair, Dr. Brunel, I'm assuming that if the Board right now goes through all this and accepts this, this certainly will help facilitate getting the minutes through much quicker.
It would, and Mrs. Kwiatkowski says yes.
Okay. True, huh? In that case, I'd like to make a motion to support the school system.
You have to read the entire?
Yes.
Resolution?
Yep.
Okay, so, I move that it be resolved and read the entire?
Okay. I was going to do that. Yep, I have it. But I'd like to facilitate this, and I can certainly see the urgency to it. Resolution number one. Having convened in an open meeting on January 27, 2014, prior to the closing date, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Auburn, in accordance with its charters, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit the Massachusetts School Building Authority, sorry. The statement of interest form dated January 21, 2014, for the Bryn Mawr Elementary School located at 35 Swanson Road, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority category and/or categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. For roofs and ventilation systems, which will be used to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs. The Bryn Mawr Elementary School roof was installed in 1948 and has exceeded its useful life and requires replacement. The school's boiler was replaced in 2012, and all other related ventilation systems were installed in 1948, thereby requiring upgrades to the ventilation system to enhance efficiencies acquired with the boiler upgrade, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of any grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Auburn to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second.
There's a second by Mr. Holstrom. Is there discussion? Mrs. Simontian?
Well, I guess I could wait until, well, on the sheet that you gave us with the cost amounts, I don't want to assume that it's a typo, considering the amount of money that's there. That second one for the second boiler replacement, whereas all the other ones are half, our match is half, that says $400,000.
It should be $40,000. I apologize. We had corrected it. I printed the wrong copy tonight, so it should be. Thank you for catching that.
And that's on the Pakicog?
Right, for Pakicog, so that.
Second boiler replacement.
Now, are these amounts part of what's being submitted with the application?
Exactly. Well, this actually, this form will be, this was a summary that was created, actually, for Wednesday night in anticipation of the vote. It will actually be the minutes and the application packet itself.
I just want to make sure that's changed, the $40,000, before we?
We vote, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is there anything else on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Is there an additional motion?
Motion be resolved, having convened in an open meeting on January 27, 2014, prior to the closing date, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Auburn, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority a statement of interest form dated January 21, 2014, for the Pakicog Elementary School located at 110 Pakicog Street, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority category and categories for which the application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. For heating and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs, one of the school's boilers was replaced in 2009, and the other boiler was installed in 1997. All other related ventilation systems were installed in 1961, thereby requiring replacement to the second boiler and upgrades to the ventilation system to enhance efficiencies acquired with the boiler upgrades, and hereby further specifically acknowledge that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of the grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or comments the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Auburn to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the second motion? Mr. Simontian?
One more question. Since we have to take three separate, each one of these has its own motion, is this three separate statement of interest?
It is.
So, would then that mean that this is not, this is not all or none? Is it possible that MSBA could say, "Well, we'll approve one, not the other two"? That's, okay.
Yes.
Are there any additional comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Thank you. And is there a final motion?
I'm going to make a motion that be resolved, having convened in an open meeting on January 27, 2014, prior to the closing date, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Auburn, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated January 21, 2014, for the Auburn Middle School located at 10 Swanson Road, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority category for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. For roofs, heating and ventilation systems, which will be used to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs. The Auburn Middle School roof was installed in 1959 and has exceeded its useful life. One of the school's boilers was replaced in 2012, and the second boiler was installed in 1959, along with the related ventilation systems that were installed in 1959, thereby requiring upgrades to the second boiler and ventilation systems to enhance energy efficiencies, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that the submitting of this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Auburn to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second. Mr. Brotherton has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Simontian?
One more question. So, after listening to all three of these statements, considering the age of these, are these the priority issues that need to be addressed? And, I mean, are there additional things that have been discussed by the School Buildings Committee that will need to be addressed at a future time? And what is, is there anything that's already been, is it in the same state where the money's been allocated, or is there some of those that will have to be addressed and brought before town meeting to approve funding to repair that we know of?
The items noted here, the accelerated repair program is specific in projects that we'll fund, and it's for the energy efficiencies, so these ones here are ones that qualify for that. On Wednesday, we will show you, there will be required to bring forward to town meeting some requests from them to reappropriate some funding. If you remember, for the past several years, we've been very strategic in the district in only utilizing CIP funds for buildings that we knew were going to remain online until a decision was made. So, once the middle school project got approved, and then the recommendation was made and accepted to use the current Auburn Middle School, now we're prepared to bring forward some recommended changes and seek town meeting support for that. We'll likewise do the same for the Bryn Mawr School in Pakicog, taking items away unless they are required, such as an oil tank removal at Julia Bancroft for the good of the building and the ground itself. So, those will be coming forth. We'll highlight those for finance and Board of Selectmen on Wednesday, and then ultimately we'll bring it forward to town meeting in May.
In order to utilize those buildings for the purpose that they're going to utilize for, I can't remember when, but you mentioned, or the School Buildings Committee mentioned that some renovations would be required. Is that also going to be addressed Wednesday? So, there will be, for what's going to be addressed? I'm hoping there will be a full accounting of cost possibly, and, okay.
It's a very detailed document, and it shows by year, and it references, excuse me, back to each year's CIP, what we're seeking to transfer. School committee approved it at their meeting last week, but it's a very detailed, clear, transparent plan for everybody to see. Absolutely.
Yeah. Like I said, if I could just get a copy of that, I apologize. I have no way to get out of this.
No problem.
Mr. Holstrom, and then Mrs. Brotherton.
And through the Chair, one question. This is the initial portion of this application process. Has anybody from Massachusetts School Building Authority been, visited the schools yet and have some idea of what our projects are going to be, or is they, we're going to submit the application and then have them come in?
Correct. It actually goes by the application. Once we submit the application, if we do get selected, what they would do is they'd send a team of engineers, and they would go and view each building. And actually, they've already done this before, going into the middle school, probably three or four years ago, they've already sent their team through. So, yeah, that is the next step. The step is, send this application in, they review it. If we get selected, they send a team in, and they'd come and evaluate our buildings and go from there.
Thank you.
Mrs. Brotherton?
Through the Chair, Dr. Brunel, was there any reason, and I'm not sure if I'm jumping the gun or not, I do not see Mary Dee or Julia Bancroft on there. Are there different thoughts on that, or?
The reason for that is, the master plan team, as part of the work that they've done over time, they came forward with a recommendation, because we'll be taking the JB and Pakicog students and educating them at the current middle school.
Yes.
We'll actually have two buildings that will no longer, eventually, once school committee, be required for educational facilities.
Okay.
And then, based on the condition of those, that was another recommendation of the master plan team, which the school committee accepted. So, ultimately, Julia Bancroft and Mary Dee, at some point, will no longer be educational facilities, at least at this point. School committee has to make a firm decision on that.
Sure.
Once repairs are made.
Thank you.
They wouldn't qualify for this.
Right.
I'm sorry.
Those two schools wouldn't qualify for this under this MSBA.
I see.
Application. However, we did leave money in our CIP to address, as Dr. Brunel stated, the oil tank at Julia Bancroft, the potential, a couple capital projects at Mary Dee Stone. They are still left in there.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Are there any further questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Thank you, Dr. Brunel.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fahy, for coming in. The next item we have is an auto repair license for Diamond Chevrolet Incorporated doing business as Diamond Chevrolet Buick GMC Cadillac located at 54 Faith Avenue. That was a 7:00 p.m. hearing. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The hearing is open. Mr. Grossman?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a statement in the fact that I'm a part-time employee at Diamond, without benefits, and really have no influence on how the vote, how a vote would go, so I would be eligible.
And do you have a financial interest in this license?
I have no financial interest.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? If you could come up, please, give your name for the rec. If you could come up, please, give your name for the record, and just tell us a little bit about why you're before us tonight.
My name's Joseph Simon. I'm the general manager of the dealership. And we're before you to apply to service, service vehicles at our facility on Faith Ave.
I know you're probably not used to public speaking, but if you could just speak up just a little bit, okay? So you've met with the DCG? Did you meet, or was it someone else?
It was someone else. It was the service manager who did.
Okay. And so after that meeting, were you given a list of recommendations by the DCG that they had intended on presenting to this board regarding parking of vehicles on paved surface, no outdoor repair, and confirming that the fire department permits in proper order?
Yes.
You're familiar with those conditions that the DCG has recommended?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Are there questions? Mr. Holstrom.
One question through the chair. This location of 54 Faith Ave, that's closest to Route 20 and is one of the older established car dealership locations from the past?
No, sir. That is, it's the one behind, the one on Route 20. It's a new building.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there anything else? Is there any public comment or questions? Did you have anything you wanted to add before we close the hearing?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? Is there a motion?
Make a motion that, motion to approve the license, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions stated upon the development, coordinating group to be printed on the license.
Second.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
And we have, the next item is a 7:05 hearing, so we're past that time. We have a transfer of malt wine and malt package to a license, Family Food Mart Incorporated, 860 Southbridge Street. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? The hearing is open as the applicant here. If you could come up to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, and tell us a little bit about why you're here tonight.
Yes, my name is Erwin Morello. I'm the owner of, I'm the lease from BP on 860 Southbridge Street, and I submit the application to transfer the malt and wine license on my name. And I'm looking forward to work with the Town of Auburn.
Do any members have any questions or comments?
Just the fact that, do you have a certificate for the procedure you need to follow on selling beer and wine?
Yes, I took the class and I passed the license with the Massachusetts Restaurant Association. I got the license that I passed back in December. I took the class and I passed the test and I got the license.
Tip certification?
Yes.
Yep. Mr. Holstrom.
Through the chair. How many employees are there going to be, and will they all be serving beer and wine there?
We're not going to be serving. We're just going to sell it.
I'm sorry. Selling beer and wine.
For now, we are just, me and my business partner, that we, we working on the place, and we trying to build the business back because the place has been closed for a few months, and for now, we are just working two people there.
And you are both, will be tip certified?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So I just want to talk a little bit about the process and the license, the license application. So the Town of Auburn does do, you know, compliance checks, and we expect you to, you know, make sure that you don't ever sell to underage people. You never sell to anyone who is under 21. And there are many conditions on your license that we would ask that you, if this license is approved, that you read through all of those conditions. If you have any questions on any of the conditions, please contact the manager's office just to be sure you're in compliance with your license.
Yes, ma'am. Actually, all that information I received when I took the class, and how do I have to protect myself and protect the public, and how to ID the people, and all that stuff. But I'm definitely trying to, I'm going to try to comply with the Town of Auburn and all those rules and regulations.
Good. And there are, there are specific, the Town of Auburn has their own liquor license policy, so you need to be sure you read through the Town of Auburn's license policy to be sure you stay in compliance with all of those.
Yes, ma'am.
Do any other members have any questions or comments? Is there any public question or comment before we close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the transfer of license, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town, any of its departments, boards, commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Is there a second?
Includes the, any DCG comments.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? Thank you, and good luck with your new business.
Thank you very much.
The next item we have is a 7:15 hearing, which we're past that time. We have a change of manager at Outback Steakhouse, 771 Southbridge Street. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
Motion to open the hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? The hearing is open as the applicant here. If you could come up to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, and just tell us why you're before us tonight.
Good morning, or good evening.
Good evening.
This is my morning. My name is Melanie Woodcock. I am here for Outback Steakhouse, 771 Southbridge Street, Auburn.
And are you the manager?
I am.
Okay. Do any members have any questions or comments for Melanie?
The comments that I made before to the prior person as far as liquor, you came from a different establishment, an Outback establishment?
I have been with Outback Steakhouse for 10 years.
In Massachusetts?
In Massachusetts, at this location.
Oh, okay. So you're familiar with all the Massachusetts laws?
I am.
Rules and regulations.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? Is there any public question or comment? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, the hearing is closed. Is there a motion regarding the change in manager?
I'd like to make, I'd like to approve the change of the manager of the Outback Steakhouse to Melanie Woodcock, and we welcome you.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? Thank you so much. Good luck in your new position. Next item we have is a 7:20, which we are past that time. A 7:20 hearing for a change of manager for the Auburn Sportsman's Club located at 50 Elm Street. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? Is the applicant here? And just for the record, I know I have one on file, but I just want to state that I am a member of the Auburn Sportsman's Club, and I have no financial interest in the license. So, good evening. If you could give your name for the record and tell us.
My name is Leanne Strong. I've been in Auburn for 20 years. I've worked at the Sportsman's Club for almost two, and I'm just here to introduce myself as the new manager.
Okay. And you've been working in the bar?
I've been working at bars for eight years, but I've been at this club for two.
Okay. So you're familiar, completely familiar with Auburn's regulations, you know, and the conditions of your license. Are there any questions or comments? No? Is there any public question or comment? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? The hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? The hearing is closed. Is there a motion regarding the application for a change of manager?
I make a motion that we approve the change of manager to Leanne Strong at the Auburn Sportsman's Club.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? Good luck in your new position.
Thank you.
We have no communications. We have Board of Selectmen items under general items. In your packet, you have an application for Valente Backhoe Services LLC for a drain layers license per the Board's policy. We don't require the applicant to be here. You have a letter from Jeff Mitchell stating that the, they have paid the application fee. The company has been licensed with the Town of Auburn for many years, and therefore they recommend the issuance of the license by the Board of Selectmen.
I'd make a motion that we approve the license, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? Next in your packet, we have a drain layers license for Johnson Builders. And also included is a statement from Mr. Jeffrey Mitchell with the same statement as the previous, $100 fee has been given with the application, and they have done business in Auburn for many years, and they are recommending the issuance of the drain layers license. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the license, provided that all the applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? The next item we have is gift acceptance, which we have none, no proclamations. Next item is Labor Council's legal opinion on the town manager's contract. In your packet, we do have an opinion dated November 22nd, and we do have, and bear with me, it is rather lengthy, a statement regarding the policy that I'm going to read. "At the last Board of, Board meeting on January 13th, a member of this Board made several comments directed at this Board that were factually incorrect. As the Chair of this Board, I feel that the residents, businesses, and taxpayers of this community erode a response to those accusations that the facts must be clarified. In voting against the town manager's appointment, Mr. Simoneon stated that it had absolutely nothing to do with the town manager. He said he was voting against the appointment because, and I quote, 'the entire process has been flawed, manipulated, and ignored.' He went on to say that the Chair took it upon herself to contact Labor Council to attend the next executive session, and that was, again, quote, 'in violation of the policy on contacting Council.' Mr. Simoneon further stated that he chose not to participate in the executive session because it was, and I quote again, 'defrauding taxpayers of this town when no vote was taken to have Counsel attend.' Finally, Mr. Simoneon closed his remarks by stating it was irresponsible and arrogant to enter into a five-year contract with a three-year appointment that the Charter doesn't even allow us to appoint. The taxpayers of this town erode an explanation and it's incumbent upon me as Chair to ensure that correct information, to ensure that the correct information is clarified. First, let me state that we are a Board, not individuals, and we take, and we as a Board take actions, not as individuals. If one member of this Board disagrees with or takes a position that is counter to another member, we should still treat each other with respect. To the, to address those statements for the record, the process was not flawed, manipulated, and ignored. The process was completely legitimate, legal, and in accordance with both the Town Charter and Mass General laws. No part of the process was manipulated, nor was anything ignored. Labor Council advised throughout the negotiating process on the options available to the town and the actions that the Board could take. Labor Council reviewed the contract and signed off for it for legal form and prepared the votes the Board ultimately took. With regard to the comments that having a three-year appointment and a five-year contract is irresponsible and arrogant, to clarify, the town manager has two statuses. Number one, as an appointed official of the Town of Auburn per the Charter, and number two, under a contract that sets forth the conditions of employment per Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 108N. This is why no legal issue with the vote, as the Charter does not address the appointment contract. The Charter addresses the appointment while Section 108, 108N addresses the employment contract. Section 108N does not specify any parameters for the term of such employment contract. The Board of Selectmen is responsible for appointing the town manager per the Charter and for entering into an employment contract per Mass General Law. This Board recognizes how difficult it is to find qualified, experienced town managers, and this Board acknowledges that Julie Jacobson is doing a tremendous job as our town manager, and we want to keep her. In order to incentivize her to stay and not look for employment, this Board made a well-thought-out and well-researched offer to Ms. Jacobson for a five-year contract, very common among town managers. As a matter of fact, our superintendent has a five-year contract, our police chief has a five-year contract, our prior town administrator had a five-year contract. The Board offered a five-year contract as it gives Ms. Jacobson incentive to continue her employment with the town and provide the town with continuity, stability, and a professional, competent, and talented town manager. Even Mr. Simoneon acknowledged that his vote in opposition to the contract had nothing to do with the town manager, as she has done everything we have asked her to do. And I would add that she has done more than we have asked her to do, and her accomplishments exceed our expectation. So the five-year contract was appropriate, legal, and intended on keeping Ms. Jacobson here in Auburn. It was not irresponsible and arrogant. Regarding the accusation that the Chair violated the Board's own policy, let me be clear that the Chair did not violate the Board's policy on contacting Labor Council or Town Council. In your packet this evening is a copy of Labor Council's legal opinion on that issue, which I will read for the record. Dear Madam Chair, I have reviewed the Auburn Board of Selectmen's policy, Section 100, as a result of the challenge by Selectmen Simoneon of the right of the Chair to contact Town Council or Labor Council. Although subsection one of Section 100 states, "No Board of Selectmen member shall engage in services of General Council or Labor Council unless authorized by a majority vote of the Board of Selectmen," that subsection needs to be read in the context of the total policy. Under subsection two of Section 100, it states, "The Chair may authorize a member of the Board of Selectmen to contact Counsel." Since the Chair may authorize such contact, the Chair would certainly authorize herself as a member of the Board of Selectmen to contact Counsel. Moreover, it has been long-established practice in the Town of Auburn that the Chair of the Board of Selectmen may contact Counsel with the approval of the Board of Selectmen. I note that the policy states it should be in consultation with the town manager, who is the CEO of the town government. In this case, however, such consultation would not be appropriate because the contact by the Chair involved the town manager's contract. Accordingly, I do not see any violation of the Board policy, Section 100, by the Town of Auburn Chair of the Board of Selectmen in her contact of Labor Council. Excuse me. I want to make it clear to the public why I, as Chair, contacted Labor Council. Two days following an executive session on October 15, 2013, Mr. Simoneon called and left a voice message stating, and I quote, "He needed to talk to me as quickly as possible." Upon returning his call, he stated that we needed to have an emergency executive session because the Board had taken an illegal vote two days earlier in executive session. Mr. Simoneon explained why he felt the vote was illegal. I told him that the vote was not illegal, but that I was going to contact Town Council regarding his request for an emergency executive session since he had a legal question. Upon contacting Attorney Moskis, Attorney Moskis stated that the vote had been legal. He offered to attend the next executive session to answer any legal questions that Mr. Simoneon had had, so that every member of the Board could hear the questions and re- every member of the Board could hear the questions and responses. I would not have contacted Labor Council immediately if Mr. Simoni had not stated that there was an urgent matter that had to be discussed in an emergency executive session since he believed an illegal vote had been taken. While the next executive session was three weeks later, Mr. Simoni was requesting an executive session right away, which is why I called Labor Council immediately. Labor Council is the appropriate person to respond to any legal questions or challenges, and I did contact him. As you know from the legal opinion I just read, the Chair has the authority to contact Labor Council, as the Chair can authorize any member, including herself, to contact Council. Thus, my actions as Chair were not contrary to this Board's policy, and they were in reaction to Mr. Simoni's urgent concerns. Regarding Mr. Simoni's statement that he chose not to participate in an executive session because it was, and I quote, "defrauding taxpayers of this town when no vote was taken to have Council attend," that is a serious allegation that's both insulting and inaccurate. This Board, under the Charter, appoints the town manager and enters into a contract or employment agreement with the town manager. Given the scope of the contract and the cost to the town for securing the town manager, it is incumbent upon the Board to ensure that the process and all applicable laws and regulations are followed. To enter into a contract without Labor Council's input would have been irresponsible, and further, it is required that Labor Council sign off on the employment contract as to legal form. It is imperative that the Board carefully examine every decision it makes with regard to employment contract and ensure that all regulation and laws are adhered to. This Board has done that and most certainly was not defrauding these taxpayers. Whether or not any member agrees with decision, those members have a responsibility to the taxpayers and voters of this town to participate in matters that are critical to the town and town manager's appointment and contract. Finally, I would like to address Mr. Simoni's statement that the Chair does not have any more power or authority than any other member of this Board. While it is true that the Chair's vote carries the same weight as that of every other Board member, the Chair does carry additional responsibilities that other members do not have. Among those responsibilities are ensuring compliance with the open meeting law, setting the agenda, ensuring the proper processes followed regarding hearings before the Board, and conducting meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, which were reformed by this Board and adopted by a previous Board. Rather than making derogatory comments about fellow Board members, I would respectfully request that all Board members to act with civility and respect when we meet as a Board. This is a policymaking Board that has important decisions to make, policymaking responsibilities, and actions to take as a licensing authority. I hope we can move past issues as a Board for the good of the community and continue to work collaboratively to facilitate our accomplishments and progress. I just have one thing I wanted to add. I was at the Massachusetts Municipal Association annual meeting and trade show this weekend, and I picked up the handbook from Massachusetts Selectmen, which, you know, it's always good to get together with other Boards. And I just want to read this from the leadership responsibilities, and it's so true, and I just, I think I really want my Board members to hear this. "The behavior of the Board of Selectmen sets a tone for the town. A Board that is constantly bickering, trying to embarrass each other, or frequently stymied by disagreements, loses credibility with the public, other town officials, and town employees. If members consistently try to overcome differences and seek to take new initiatives, it is far more likely that their lead will be followed." So I just ask this Board, let's move forward, let's agree to disagree, but do it with respect. Mr. Simoni?
Yeah, so I guess, wow, there's a whole pack of stuff in there that needs to be addressed. And I will start by saying, just because you say it, don't make it so. Let's begin with this ruling by the Town's Attorney. This is called a legal opinion for a reason because I can guarantee you that for every Harvard-educated lawyer you can find who says it's black, someone else can find a Yale-educated lawyer who will go to court and litigate and argue that it's white.
I'll just say, Mr. Simoni, regarding that, it's our Council who gives the opinion.
I'm speaking.
Mr. Simoni, and I'm Chairman, and I'm going to tell you.
Being silenced once again.
No, you're not being silenced, and you have to stop playing the victim.
I'm not playing the victim.
You're not the victim.
You allow everyone else on this Board to speak at liberty whenever they want, and I am constantly cut off when I try to make an argument. This is, again, I'm in mid-sentence and you interrupt me. I let you read a four-page, god knows what, without one word. I sat here and listened. And as usual, the minute I start to speak, you have something to say, and I'm the one who's wrong.
Go ahead, Mr. Simoni.
This is ridiculous.
Go ahead, Mr. Simoni.
Back to this opinion. Now, let's consider this. Mr. Moskis was in attendance. I made it clear that the policy said it required a vote of the Board in order for a Council to be contacted. That vote was never taken, number one. Okay? So then, this is a policy issue. Mr. Moskis is not our policy attorney. Mr. Henigan is. He ruled, now, I want you to understand this. He was in a position where he was in attendance at a meeting, being paid whatever his hourly rate was. After he attended that executive session and billed the town, he then made a ruling on an issue that he was part of. So he financially benefited from his ruling. I'm not an attorney, I'm just saying, and if you want to go by the policy, if you want to go by Robert's rules, as the Chair has said time and time again, we should follow Robert's rules. I never argued the point that the Chair set the agenda and ran the meetings. But this statement in here, it has been a longstanding policy or established practice in the Town that the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, that's absolutely not true. When I first got elected to this Board, any member could freely contact legal counsel if they had a problem. And the only reason this policy exists is because of an issue that arose a couple of years ago involving me, and this policy was put in place to do nothing more than to silence me. And let's face it, a policy like this is something that can be absolutely used by a majority of the Board to bully the minority of the Board, which Robert's rules also addresses and prohibits. So for someone who is so adamant that we follow policy and we follow Robert's rules, we're going to write a policy that directly conflicts Robert's rules, and furthermore, now we're amending that policy when, so we've had a cell phone policy that's been violated, we have an attorney contact policy that's been violated, just at the whim of, you know, I argued against both policies. I said it was ludicrous to even have them. When the first opportunity came up that there was a conflict with that policy, it was violated, and now we're amending it. Let's face it, if no one thought they did anything wrong was done, there'd be no reason to amend this policy. So now we're amending it to have another catch-all, and the next time something happens, we'll amend it again. It's absolutely ridiculous. Any member of this Board should be allowed to contact legal counsel. And let's face it, the fact that our Town Attorney, Mr. Holstrom, has argued from day one in support of this policy to contact legal, that we should vote to contact legal counsel, that he wants to cut down on legal costs? If I ever was in a position, in my opinion, this opinion that's been rendered by legal counsel opens us to further litigation because the fact that he has rendered an opinion on something that he financially benefited from, if I was on the other side of an opinion, I would certainly argue it. So we've, in essence, by putting a policy in place that was supposed to cut down on costs, potentially put ourselves in a position to open us up for further litigation and incur more costs. It's the ridiculousness of it. These are the points I argued from day one, they were ignored. The Chair wants to sit here and talk about acting, working together as a Board, and yet, common sense and moral compass arguments that I've made have been completely ignored, and four members of this Board have consistently voted for policies that they want to put in place. So you can pander to the audience and to the facts of the facts. This legal opinion, I could find 10 other attorneys that would go to court, take your money, and be happy to argue the other side. That's what they do. Okay? You've got an attorney who rendered a legal opinion on something he participated in, for the rest of us, it would be a no-no. Absolutely ridiculous. So I stand by my comments. A policy was violated. You can paint it any color you want. You can put a bow on a pig, it's still a pig.
Have you finished?
For now.
Moving on to the next item, we have member items. An update on the Board of Selectmen Policy Subcommittee, Proposed Amendments. And before you are the policy set we discussed at the last meeting, we, as you know, Mrs. Brotherton wasn't well, so we have not met regarding the outdoor entertainment policy, the indoor entertainment policy, and the carnival policy. But you do have before you, Section 100, Rules and Procedures, Board of Selectmen Agenda Policy. This was more a housekeeping issue, to be sure that the policy was clear, that it is in conjunction with the Chair in his or her absence of Vice Chair. Do we want to take them separately, or, I think we should take them separately. So this would just amend the policy that it's not the town manager who prepares the agenda solely. It's in conjunction with the Chair, or in his or her absence, the Vice Chair.
And that's how I read it, Madam Chair, and I believe that we should add that, I'll make a motion that we add the language after the word "office" in 1.700 of Section 100, "in conjunction with the Chair or in his or her absence, the Vice Chair."
Is there a second?
And that does spell out that there's not one individual making the agenda. The Chairman or the Vice Chair is taking part in.
Okay, there's a second by Mr. Grossman. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. The next item is B-6B, Member Items, and we were just looking to add language. This is something that Mr. Holstrom had brought up, that we've gone back and forth through a couple times. Add the language, "Members will provide a written summary at the time of proposal. Any related documents are to be provided to the Administrative Assistant by Friday morning prior to the meeting for Board packets." Is there any interest in adopting this policy? Do we want to hold it? Mrs. Brotherton?
May I make a motion to add this language into our policy?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Grossman?
We customarily had used Wednesdays as the last day of submission for anything to be part of the agenda. Are we talking about something else here?
Well, this is just, you know, not the agenda item, but if there were any related documents, say, like, you know, the Superintendent had a presentation tonight that was included in our packet. You know, legal counsel's opinion was included in our packet if there were any related documents. But yeah, member items still need to be in as a rule by Wednesday prior to the meeting. Is that all, Mr. Grossman? Mr. Simoni?
Yeah, I've already, at the last meeting, I gave my reasons for arguing against this. So I'm gonna, since, I'm pretty sure this is probably going to pass, I'd like to request an amendment to this, that this not only applies to members of the Board of Selectmen but to all presentations as well, because I think it's only fair. If you're going to put something on the agenda, then everybody should have a full, and that way, we won't have another one of those bootlicking, sandbagging episodes that we had from the school committee chair back in April.
Chief, what presentations are you speaking of?
I'm talking about the broad agenda item that the Chair of the School Committee was allowed to put on the agenda, discussion of Auburn schools or something like that, to which there could be a million things, there's no way you could have prepared, and he used that broad sweeping brush that he was granted by this Board to then come up here and use it to beat me up. So if you're gonna do it for the Board, then you should do it for anyone who's going to appear before this Board. I would expect the same level of detail for anyone else who's going to present here. Why should they be held to any less of a standard?
You're talking about other than public comments.
Other than public comments. If you're gonna put an agenda item on here under Presentations and Hearings, if you're gonna come up here and do a presentation, why shouldn't it have to be just as specific as a member item? Why should it be any different? You'll have another one of those episodes that we had here. I can throw anything on the agenda I want, and then I can come up here and use it however I feel. Make it specific. If it's good for us, it's good for everyone else.
If you could just repeat the motion, please?
I would just ask that an amendment be made to it, that this not only applies to members of the Board of Selectmen, but for all presentations as well. All member items that fall under, I mean, all items that would fall under Public Hearings and Presentations. Most of our public hearings are pretty well written out, so there's no issue there, but...
Okay, so to add an amendment to member items for other presentations, probably isn't the best place for it, but we can certainly...
I'll propose a separate motion. I'll propose it in a separate motion then after we vote on this one.
Okay, well, okay, so we're under the member items. Is there anything else on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
So you're referring to Presentations and Hearings?
Yeah, like I said, the hearings are pretty well documented. There's really never an issue with knowing what's going to be discussed in hearings. But we've had presentations that have been pretty broad. If you want the public to have a good understanding and knowledge and be able to prepare for our member items, why shouldn't they be given the same for any presentations?
Okay, so per our own policy, we can't change our own policy until our next meeting. So if you want to just provide me with that language, we'll have it under Board of Selectmen Policies, and we'll take a vote on that at the next meeting. And so, under public, the next item is Public Comment, and this was just another housekeeping issue. Public comment, all individuals shall sign up 15 minutes prior to their scheduled start time on the sheet located at the podium, and then we recommended adding the word "and" indicate their item, because that is on the signup sheet now. Mr. Holstrom?
We have on the agenda tonight, as we usually do, we have Item 4, we have Public Comment, and then, tonight, under our agenda, Item 10 is Public Comments.
So the intent of that was, when we adopted it, public comment at the start of the meeting was for people to bring concerns or comments that they may have. The second public comment is supposed to be related to agenda items that may have not been, you know, they may not have had an opportunity to speak to that item. So that second public comment is supposed to be related to the agenda and anything that may have been said at that meeting. It's not for new items.
That's what I understood, but that's what I wanted to hear. I wanted just to clarify that. Thank you.
Is there any additional comments or questions on this one?
I make a motion that we add the language after the word "podium" and indicate their item under Public Comments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Okay. Under Section 100, Rules and Procedures, Board of Selectmen Communications with Legal Counsel, we had proposed adding Number 3, "The Chairman of the Board shall have access to Town Labor Council for legal matters before the Board." And when we had discussed this, since there was, you know, since there was comment that the policy wasn't clear... that the policy wasn't clear to the fact that the chairman would have access to counsel, we wanted to add this to make it very clear, without, you know, referring back to a legal opinion. Are there comments or questions?
Madam Chair, I believe that this addition will definitely spell out any misconceptions or any different interpretations of what this policy would be. And I think that with the addition of this and to maintain this Board of Selectmen communications with legal counsel, I think it's very important. It's checks and balances and a filtering system, so that any questions can go to the chair or to the town manager and identify whether it's a policy issue or whether it's a legal issue before we spend the money. Thank you.
Mr. Simontian.
So I want to make sure I word this, so this doesn't seem that I'm insulting a member of the board. So through the chair, I find that statement to be unbelievably contradictory and bordering on ridiculous. To say that it will cut down on costs, it doesn't matter if a member of this board or the chair contacts legal counsel, you're paying. So I don't see how you can make the statement that for the chair to contact counsel and find out if it's a legal issue or a policy issue, there will be no cost. Then if that phone is picked up on the other end, there's a cost incurred. So that doesn't make any sense. And secondly, to talk about checks and balances, which, if you want to get into it, our checks and balances are pretty clear, that it removes the ability of any one group to take over and impose their will on another group. That's what checks and balances is. This policy does nothing more than remove those checks and balances. This policy, as I said, makes it very, very simple for a majority of this board to use this policy to bully and silence a minority of the board. That's all it does. That is all that's going on here. Let's call a spade a spade. That's what's happening here. This policy is not about checks and balances. It's not about saving money. This is to make sure that any member of this board cannot go to legal counsel, as I needed to a couple of years ago, without everybody else knowing what's going on. That's what's going on here, folks. So let's not sugarcoat it. Let's not paint it as something else. This has nothing to do with checks and balances. This has everything to do with bullying a minority of the board and silencing a minority of the board. It's all we're doing. You can call it whatever you want. And like I said before, common sense and a moral compass would prevent anyone from voting on this motion or from putting this policy into place.
So I'll just make one comment on behalf of the subcommittee. When we discuss this, you know, and in discussions, we said, especially when you have new members, the same member could have the same legal question regarding an agenda item. So the thought was that this would prevent individual members from going to legal counsel and potentially asking the same question, which, like you pointed out correctly, once you pick up the phone, there's a charge. There was no, you know, ulterior motives. That was the discussion. The meetings are open. They're posted for anyone to come hear what the discussion is when we propose these. And that was the discussion, that new members may potentially have the same question. And if members go to legal counsel with the same question, this would prevent it. As I said in my statement, we act as a board, not as individual members.
I understand that, but you know as well as I do that there are times when members of this board need to talk to legal counsel for the reasons that we're all aware of. They were discussed in executive session, so they can't be brought up here. But every single person on this board is aware of it. So again, you can sit here and say, let's play nice and let's do all this. You know as well as I do that this policy was brought up immediately after that issue came to pass. After I contacted legal counsel without coming to the board because it was a matter that directly affected me and only me as a selectman in this town. This board was going to have none of that. They were going to make sure that they knew everybody's business, and nobody was going to go to legal counsel unless they all knew about it. That's the essence of this policy.
Madam Chair, has there been a motion on this yet regarding this policy?
No.
Well, I will make the motion that we add, the chairman of the board shall have access to town labor council for legal matters before the board. And that's proposed, adding number three under Section 100, Board of Selectmen Communications with Legal Counsel.
Second.
Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
The final item we have is under Section 100, Licenses and Permits. And this is regarding entertainment. The policy currently reads, "No form of entertainment, including but not limited to radio, television, record, or live music or dancing, shall be allowed without first obtaining an entertainment license for weekday and/or Sunday use. This includes use of amplified music inside or outside." So we have recommended removing the words "radio, television, and recorded music." So the section would now read, "No form of entertainment, including but not limited to live music or dancing, shall be allowed without first obtaining an entertainment license for weekday and/or Sunday use. This includes the use of amplified music inside or outside." Is there any discussion on this? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Mrs. Brotherton?
I'd like to make a motion that we reword this, and it becomes part of our legal license policy, to remove the words "radio, television, and recorded music," please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? As I said, the subcommittee will be working on an updated full entertainment license and outdoor entertainment license when we, you know, can schedule that next.
So I do have the question. We are going to have a separate policy, and that will define the difference between the two of them.
Yes, that's going to be the recommendation, and we'll work on that and bring that forward. Is there anything else? We have a motion to adopt the language, Mr. Grossman?
I'm not in favor of having any amplified outdoor music at any establishment.
Is there anything else on this? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. The next item is by Mr. Simontian. A vote to rescind the selectmen policy requiring a vote of the board before contacting counsel. Mr. Simontian.
Well, I guess there's really no point in addressing this agenda item, is there? I mean, four people on this board have already voted to add language that only the chair can contact legal counsel, so it kind of seems like a waste of time to even put it to a vote, to rescind the policy, since everybody was in favor of only the chair being able to contact legal counsel. So, I mean, I guess since it's on the agenda, sure, I'll make the motion to rescind the selectmen policy requiring a vote of the board before contacting legal counsel.
This motion by Mr. Simontian, is there a second?
Nope.
None, we'll move on. We have town manager items. There are none. Did you have anything?
I do not.
Okay, we have no tabled items. Is there any additional public comments? Mr. Page?
Good evening, excuse me, Wayne Page, 900 Carmen Road. As a resident, I have been seeing this board go forward lately, and just with the policies that are coming up, they're making it harder and harder for the residents in the town. And it really bothers me that, you know, and I feel, and I don't always agree with Mr. Simontian, so. The thing is, even with this legal stuff, this is, something is going on just to shut up one individual. It's been going on for years, and it keeps going on. Maybe the board members ought to start listening to every board member, not just having, what I call them is puppets. You all know that, and I'll still call them that. But that's it, I'm done with that.
Okay, I do want to make a statement to you, though.
That's okay, but, um, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I am going to make a statement to you.
Go ahead.
You know, and I just want to point out, as you know, you're an elected official to two boards.
Yep.
And you serve on other appointed boards. You of all people should know how inappropriate it is to make personal attacks under public comment. I'm going to ask you to stop making derogatory statements to a board member is a personal attack. You've made it at the last three meetings, and I'm not going to allow it.
Okay.
Attorney Henigan has ruled that we can't anticipate what someone's going to say. But certainly, if you make a practice of saying the same thing and making a personal attack on one board member at each meeting, that's not appropriate.
But it's not a personal attack. It's a true fact.
No, in your.
I'm sorry, if you disagree, and you have the right, as chairman, to disagree with my standings.
It's also a derog.
But as a resident of this town and a taxpayer, I have the right to say what I have to say. I'm not up here as a school committee. I'm not up here for being on any other committee. I'm up here as a resident, speaking as a resident of the town of Auburn and a taxpayer. I have the right to say what I say. If that's what I believe in, that's what it is. That's what I believe in.
You have the right to believe what you want to believe. It's in the presentation. I'm not going to allow for personal attacks on board members.
Well, I disagree with you. It's not a personal attack. It's a fact. And just to follow up, there's two people up in May for election this year.
We can't discuss some.
We need to remove them. We need to have people that care about our town back in our.
A public meeting is not an appropriate place to address politics. Seeing no additional public comment, we have the minutes of May 28, 2013. Are there any corrections or omissions? The chair will accept them as written. I will now entertain a motion.
Mr. Page, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? The hour, Charlie.